...to the 14th century. And Prince Leopold was a great fan of music. As a youngster, he'd gone to school in Amsterdam, gone to college there, and fallen in love with the Italian Baroque, especially the music of Vivaldi. Now, that may seem strange, and we'll get to this a little bit more in tomorrow's show, but Amsterdam was a great set-
Seventeenth, 2014, and happy Saint Patrick's Day to all of those out there. I see a number of folks wearing green. And so, we'll start this meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Tom Lamarc.
Thank you. I want you to please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the fellow Republicans, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate us from our own sin.
Thank you, Tom. Next, I want to introduce Paul Kimmel from Avista for the 125th anniversary. Paul, it's yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Good evening. On behalf of Avista, I want to thank you for this opportunity tonight, and especially thank you for this recognition. We have a short video we want to share with you. Let's see, I don't need the audited financial statements for the city here, but I think we're ready to go.
Jamie, we're ready back there. Here we go.
Thank you.
In 1889, when a group of local businessmen set out to harness the power of the Spokane River to meet the needs of a growing community, they did more than just provide electricity. They fueled innovation, created opportunities, sparked imaginations. They changed lives. One hundred twenty-five years later, their vision is our legacy. When the great Spokane Fire leveled the city's downtown commercial district less than five months after our founding, our crews responded heroically. Working long into the night, they restored electrical service the very next day. When a growing region needed more energy production, we responded by building Knoxon Rapids Dam in 1959. It was, and still is, our largest generating plant, and when it was constructed, it nearly doubled our power generation capability. When Spokane was chosen to host the 1974 World's Fair, it was the smallest city ever to achieve that distinction. We donated five acres of land for the exposition, land that today is part of Riverfront Park. When our award-winning Kettle Falls Biomass Generating Station went online in 1983, it was the first of its kind in the United States, a power plant built to produce renewable energy from wood waste. When we formed the Avista Foundation in 2002, few would have imagined that 12 years later, combined foundation and corporate giving would top $10 million, all with one goal: to help individuals and their communities grow and prosper. When we were one of the handful of utilities in the nation awarded multiple grants to upgrade our electric distribution system in 2009, we invested over $80 million to modernize the grid, an investment that will provide customer benefits for decades to come. One hundred twenty-five years ago, we saw the potential of clean, reliable hydropower. We believed it would transform lives. And it did. Today, we operate and manage energy generation, transmission, and distribution facilities in four western states. Yet, we continue to set our sights on the future. A new generation of Avista employees is imagining the possibilities of a smarter grid, a diverse resource mix that includes clean burning natural gas, wind, and biomass. A sustainable future for the communities we help build, and for those who call this place
Thank you, Mayor. And the next 125 years will clearly be much different than the first 125, but please know that we'll be here for the community, for the city of Moscow, just like we have been. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. And I'm very proud to read this proclamation, Avista's 125th Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas Avista has deep roots in the region's history, beginning in 1889, the incorporation of Washington Water Power in direct response to an increasing demand for electricity in the growing region; and whereas innovation and record-setting accomplishments, while providing a legacy of reliable service and partnerships for economic and community vitality are milestones throughout the company's long history; and whereas Washington Water Power, which changed its name to Avista in 1999, has remained true to its principles and values of trust, innovation, and collaboration while evolving to meet customer needs; and whereas the extension of transmission lines across the Palouse to Moscow in 1905 enhanced the availability of safe, reliable power to the community and the University of Idaho as it celebrates its 125th anniversary. Now, therefore, I, Bill Lambert, Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby recognize the important role that Avista plays every day in bringing the energy that is essential for our homes, schools, and businesses, and the ongoing support for the community and economic vitality it has given since 1889, and proclaim the month of March, 2014, as the beginning of a year-long celebration of Avista's 125th anniversary in the city of Moscow, dated the 17th day of March, 2014. Paul, I have a hard copy here for you.
Mayor, I'd like a motion that we pass the Consent Agenda as presented. Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as is, and a second by John, motion by Walter. We'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that passes, so we will move on to Mayor's appointments. And I have an appointment for Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, Randy Buckle. Randy, are you here? Please stand up so everybody can get a chance to see you, Randy. Thank you very much. Randy is going to serve through December 31st of 2016 through his first tour here with us, and thank you very much for taking that job responsibly on, Randy. We're very appreciative that you're here and looking forward to having you on this commission. You're welcome.
Your Honor.
Wait, I'm going to make a motion to approve the nomination.
Second.
And I think Wayne seconded.
Okay, Tom made the motion approved, Wayne seconded it, and I was just so excited about getting you out here on the floor, Randy. I just wanted to move right on, folks. Okay, we'll start to roll with John.
Aye.
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 Now it's official.
And now it is official, six to zero. And folks, one thing about me, I just move on, I keep going forward, so you gotta kind of laugh and roll with the punches here a little bit. Okay, number three, public comment and Mayor's response time, 15 minutes for the public, so if somebody would like to come up here and say anything to us for three minutes, as long as it's not on the agenda tonight or something before us, please come up. State your name and address, ma'am.
This is, I'm Margaret Deville. I live on 31, 1131 Jack Shaw Road, and what I would like to do is ask you, Mr. Mayor, to remind you that Bike Month is coming up in May, and we would, the bicyclists around Moscow would be very grateful if you could do an official proclamation for Bike Month in May.
Thank you very much, and we have a certain council person up here that rides a bike probably more than anybody else in town. I'm sure he'll be more than happy to remind you of that, Tom, so-
I'll remind you of that one, too.
Okay, so we'll go on.
Thanks.
Other folks would like to do comments? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to number four, which is noise ordinance support by our Chief of Police, David Duke. Dave, come on up here, sir, if you would.
Good evening. I have a short presentation on a question that was brought up in February during the council public comment, referred to last year's responses to noise complaints, how many citations were issued, a disposition of those, and then possible trends based on what's occurred over the last five years. But before you in the slides, we responded to 625 noise complaints. Of those, we issued 24 citations, which averages out to be right at about 4% enforcement compared to education. Of those 24, you can see that 11 pleaded guilty, or were found guilty in court, eight were dismissed, one was amended from one code section to another, and then we still have four pending currently in court. Fines ranged on these misdemeanor charges from $255 to $455, and of those, that is, that's of those areas, you can see the majority of the citations are written on the state code of disturbing the peace, and then we have two separate areas of our noise code violations. If you look at our trends, the noise ordinance was revised back in '08, 1st of January. This is where the council gave officers discretion to actually be the charging officer instead of having all citizens that complained be the complaint and sign the citation. So, since 2008, and that discretion was implemented, you can see there's been a downward trend of the complaints we respond to up and through 211, and then it mostly has plateaued off there. So, I'm pretty sure we're doing the best we can with the complaints that are coming in, and then the citations that are listed below there mostly just average less than 25. So, I'm open to any questions you may have.
I'll go with Wayne first.
Chief, I see that we've got roughly a third of the citations were dismissed. It seems like that number is a little high.
That's on average what the dispositions are over the past many years, and I can refer that to our city attorney who's here that deals with that, but I can also relate that our whole purpose and focus is for compliance instead of penalties, and that is when we sit down and they have their pretrial conferences, a lot of that disposition's worked out through mediation.
If I'd like, if you'd like, I can answer some of that.
Okay, Roger.
There's a high, seems like a high number of calls, but you've got to remember, a lot of these end up being other calls when they get there. People hear a disturbance, they may roll up, and it may be a domestic or something else going on, so their initial call might have been a disturbing the peace, and it didn't end up being there. It could have been some other offense, and there could have been other charges filed. And then the question on the disposition of whether, you know, 11 or half of them get dismissed, just depends on what the facts are. When you get to court, it could be that it was a he said, she said situation, or just two neighbors, and we don't have the proof issues. I mean, it's the proof problem, so you wouldn't be able to get the conviction, and it may get done, resolved with a dismissal, or it may be part of another charge that they have, and it may be part of a plea bargain.
Chief, if I read the first slide correctly, it appears there are two different disturbing the peace state codes listed.
The first is the state code under Title 18, and then we have three different Title 10 ordinances in code. The first under 11, Chapter 2 is the specific violations, and Chapter 9 encompasses everything. So, there are seven sections in Chapter 2 that deal specifically with a certain type of noise, and then Chapter 9 says everything within that code you can write.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments for the chief? I got something I want to say, Chief Duke. I remember when this ordinance was passed and came about, I was on councils as well as John Weber, and I believe Tom was on at that time as well. And this was brought up by a number of citizens, and one time they thought there was a little bit of a public push, a small public push, about this being something that the police officers were going to be looking out to do purposely, and looking at the numbers you have, some of those citations, there's actually less citations now than before we put that in, but yet the complaints have dropped, so that's kind of a double-edged sword. If you look over there on 2007 and '08, I mean, they got installed in there in 2008, there was 32, and you can see it progressively going down, both on citations and calls and complaints, and that's a big deal. I mean, that's something we should look at, and so it's working, is what I'm saying, Dave.
Yeah, I believe it does work. The officers aren't dependent on one of our community members to come forward, and they let the violator know at that point that if they come back, they can take their own action instead of having another community member be responsible.
Terrific. Thank you, Dave. Has anybody got any other things for debate? Thank you, Captain. Chief Duke? Okay, number five, Citizen Commissioner Report from Urban Renewal Agency. Jeff Jones is here somewhere. I see, there he is. Come on up, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Jeff Jones. I'm the Economic Development Specialist for the City of Moscow, and then the other hat that I wear is the Executive Director of the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency. The agency profile, the agency was organized by the Moscow City Council in 1995 pursuant to state code in accordance with the Urban Renewal Law. The agency acts as an arm of the Idaho State Government entirely separate and distinct from the city of Moscow. The purpose of the agency is to undertake urban renewal projects in areas designated by the city of Moscow to be deteriorating and to undertake this rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, or a combination thereof in the interest of public health, safety, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city of Moscow. The agency is comprised of seven commissioners appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council with terms as specified by the mayor as authorized by Moscow City Council Resolution 2008-17. Membership is constituted as follows: two members of the Moscow City Council, one member of the Latah County Commission, and four members from the citizenry at large. Terms are staggered in such a fashion that no more than three expire in any given year. The chairperson is the chief presiding officer of the agency. The chair executes all deeds, bonds, contracts, and other legal documents authorized by the commission. Some of the chair's duties may be delegated by the Board of Commission to the agency's halftime executive director, who oversees the day-to-day operations of the agency and carries out the policies of the board. The current board consists of John McCabe, chairman, Steve McGeehan, vice chairman, Brandy Sullivan, secretary, Dave McGraw, commissioner, Steve Drown, commissioner, John Weber, commissioner, and Art Beckey, commissioner. Staff support is myself, Don Palmer, our treasurer, Gary Redner, Stephanie Claus, Joel DeNublio, accounting specialist, Jim Pifner, and our legal counsels, Ryan Armbruster from Ilum and Burke in Boise. How are districts created? Well, the city of Moscow is responsible for defining the geographic boundaries and the legal creation of all urban renewal districts within the city. The Alturis Technology Park District was created in 1995, and the Legacy Crossing District was created in 2008. The agency's activities within these districts are directed by specific urban renewal plans adopted by the Moscow City Council. The agency provides funding for these efforts through the use of tax incremental financing. This is an example of how tax increment financing works, when a district is created. The assessed valuation is frozen to all the taxing districts in the project area. The base value is frozen, and then as improvements and values are added to the district, then those dollars are then channeled to the Urban Renewal Agency, who in turn uses those dollars to finance projects that are eligible under the plan. There are three approaches to project finance. There's pay-as-you-go, TIF debt financing, bond sale, and owner participation agreements. Pay-as-you-go, revenue is invested as it is collected. An example would be a community that collects $50,000. An annual TIF would either undertake a small project that costs $50,000 or accumulate enough annual TIF collection until it had funds to support a larger project. That approach is simple and straightforward, but improvements occur much more slowly because investment in any year is limited to current or accumulated TIF revenue. TIF debt financing, TIF revenue is used to borrow funds, bond sale to make large upfront investments, helping to accelerate new private development. It's more complicated and costly to execute than pay-as-you-go financing, but facilitates larger-scale infrastructure investments more quickly. Owner participation agreements are where private developers or companies front the costs for new public infrastructure and are repaid out of future TIF revenues. The agency revenues in this table, you can see that under Alturis Technology Park, we had approximately $323,000 budgeted. Actual was $394,000. We had an excess of $70,000. We do try to budget conservatively within the districts. Under property tax, under Legacy Crossing, we budgeted $126,725. The actual came in significantly lower at $97,548, and that was a result of a tax increment calculation error relating to software provided by the Idaho State Tax Commission to the Latah County Assessor. Once we learned of that particular area error, then the agency immediately put in policies to limit spending so that we did not exceed our actual annual budget. Expenditure trends, you can see that capital outlay, you know, jumped in 2010 with the acquisition of the Sixth and Jackson property. Since that time, you can see that it's dropped significantly with some improvements that were made in 2012 through 2013. Operating expenditures have behaved relatively the same, and debt service continues to go down. The five-year long-term debt trend, as we move closer to closing the Alturis Technology Park District in 2015, then you'll see this trend continue. There are two districts, Legacy Crossing and Alturis Technology Park. The Alturis Technology Park revenue allocation area takes in 62.1 acres. The project area is Phase 1 with 7.37 acres, was established in 1996. Phase 2, 6.34 acres, was established in 2005. The Mura is a property owner in the district. The district will close in 2015. The RTO zone, which is a research and technology zone, provides for those types of companies. There are currently 110 highly skilled jobs, average wage approximately $50,000. Some of the high-tech companies are Alturis Analytics, Comtech HA, Anatech Labs, and Bio Tracking. Some of the highlights in this last year, the Mura prepaid the city of Moscow $27,000 that were used to construct ADA-compliant pedestrian drops throughout Alturis Technology Park. Public sewer extension, the Mura prepaid the city of Moscow $42,410 that was used to construct and install 220 feet of sanitary sewer pipe along with associated asphalt patching and resurfacing work from Alturis Drive to Mountain View Road. Public sewer easement, the Mura entered into an agreement with Thompson Development LLC, Eckerd Properties LLC, and the city of Moscow to provide a 20-foot easement for public sanitary sewer service in exchange for the abandonment of a private 10-foot easement. The abandonment of the private easement significantly improves the agency's ability to market the remaining lots, and the new public easement provides expansion opportunities to adjacent landowners. Some of the other highlights include the Mura began to review the CCNRs and land use tables for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 within the Alturis Technology Park. RFP was prepared for the commercial brokerage services, and we now have a contract in place with Palouse Commercial for the six remaining lots. In ongoing maintenance, the Mura continues to provide maintenance for the entryway sign light and other infrastructure as necessary. What's next? As we want to continue to aggressively market the remaining six lots for sale, update the CCNRs for Phase 2 within the Alturis Technology Park, and prepare the necessary closeout plan in support of the planned termination of the district in 2015, and continue to provide ongoing maintenance as necessary. Legacy Crossing District is approximately 163 acres in size. The Mura is also a property owner in that district. It's a future mixed-use area, strong town-and-gown linkage between the University of Idaho and Moscow's downtown. Some of the challenges within that district: incompatible uses, infrastructure deficits, poor circulation, and brownfield properties. Some of the highlights for the past year, the agency and the city of Moscow made application and were awarded an EPA cleanup grant in the amount of $115,317 to be used towards the remediation and mitigation of the Mura-owned property at Sixth and Jackson. The Idaho Smart Growth Award, the city of Moscow and Mura were honored as a Grow Smart Award recipient by Idaho Smart Growth. The award was given to recognize the public policy and planning endeavors the city and Mura have accomplished with adoption of the Moscow City Council of the zoning district the overlay and design guidelines in June of 2012. EMSI's relocation into Legacy Crossing, approximately 90 employees, average salary of $47,800. EPA brownfield assessment grant, the Mura has completed additional Phase 2 environmental assessment work and draft analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives, APCA, for the Mura-owned property at Sixth and Jackson. What's next? The agency will enter into the Idaho Department of Environmental Qualities voluntary compliance program to facilitate the cleanup of the Mura-owned Sixth and Jackson property, prepare and issue a request for proposal for an environmental contractor to oversee the cleanup of the Sixth and Jackson property, resolve the tax increment error between the Mura and Latah County by the second quarter of 2014. That is pretty much completed. Continue to enter into owner participation agreements for eligible projects within the district as they present themselves. Potential legislation this year before the House, House Bill 573, sponsored by Representative Rick Youngblub, Republican Nampa, and Representative Robert Endrist from Nampa. The bill would add two new sections to the Urban Renewal Law and Idaho Code to require majority voter approval for any project involving the construction of a city hall or library with a cost of $1 million or more if at least half the total project cost is to be paid with revenue allocation revenues. The voting requirement would not apply to any project where more than $10,000 in project costs have been incurred prior to July 1st, 2014. House Bill 574, sponsored by Representative Meilik from Corlaine. The bill would amend the definition of project costs in Idaho Code 502903 to provide the costs of a city, county, or taxing district in connection with an urban renewal project may be reimbursed by the Urban Renewal Agency. The Redevelopment Association of Idaho, of which the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency is a member, provided testimony on these two bills, asked that the bills be held in committee. The bills were also opposed by the Idaho Association of Cities. Both bills are awaiting hearing, were approved by the House and are awaiting hearing in Senate Local Government and Taxation Committee. Questions?
Questions. John, you're on that, you're one of the members on that.
Yeah, I was actually, when it came my turn to speak at the end of the meeting, he took care of it for me. It is laid it out very well, Jeff. We are moving along- We are moving along both with the original project that we had, plus the other project is moving. The only real bump we had was the problem with the assessed value, and that is being taken care of. Like you said, at sometime at the end of the second quarter, it will be all taken care of, and we'll be able to move forward. I think some of the things that we're going to be dealing with a lot is going to be the new CCNRs that we have yet to spend a lot of time with, but we're going to be working through those. And then, real glad that we've signed a agreement with a commercial real estate. Signs are up. We get a monthly report. So all in all, I'm, you know, you're never really happy unless you have sold the last lot, but we're moving along quite well, and most of that is due to you, and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, John. Art, you're on that commission as well.
The amount that I've got to say shrinks exponentially each time these guys say something, so I don't really have anything to add, other than I'm really happy to see that we have some of the lot sales in commercial hands to more aggressively market those last lots. I'm glad to see that.
Tom?
I served on the URA board for quite a while in the past few years, and I'm glad to see that the contract's been signed to try to market those last six lots. It's good news to my ears, and hoping to see some fun things happen on the corner of Sixth and Jackson as well in the near future. So hopefully that'll move forward as also. Thanks for all your good work on that. And it sounds like the legislation in Boise is not nearly as threatening to urban renewal agencies as it has been in past years, so that's possibly an encouraging sign.
Okay. Are there comments for Jeff on URA? Okay, Jeff, we're going to move on here on the next one with the national, regional, local economic indicators. You would like to bring that forward?
Jeff's changing hats.
Yep, he's moving to another thing. Well, you have to be a multitask around here, folks. That's just how it works.
Notice how lazy I am. I use the same template.
I like that. That's conservative. There's no problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, periodically I provide economic updates of various indicators to the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency Board, and Supervisor Redner felt it might be of value to do the same thing for this body as well. What is an economic indicator? An economic indicator is a piece of economic data, usually of macroeconomic scale, that is used by investors to interpret current or future investment possibilities and judge the overall health of the economy. They're usually split into three categories: leading, lagging, and coincident. Due to the nature of economic reporting, the vast majority of indicators will be lagging to some extent. Leading indicators are popular because they give the earliest warnings about an economy to do change from boom to bust or vice versa. However, leading indicators can be less reliable than other indicators. For example, the Conference Board runs an index which has correctly predicted every recession since it started, but has also produced some false signals. This led economist Paul Samuelson to joke economists have correctly predicted nine of the last five recessions. Examples of leading indicators would be money supply figures, mortgage originations, consumer confidence surveys. Lagging indicators are useful information from the recent past to make predictions. As a general rule, the longer the lag, the more accurate the indicator will be, as is based on larger quantity of information. However, an indicator that lags too much may be useless for quick-moving cycles. Examples of lagging indicators: employment, industrial production, home prices, et cetera. Coincident indicators are those giving information about the current state of the economy because of delays in aggregating and formatting data. It's often very difficult to get useful data of this nature. For example, these data might be daily sales figures for a department store or an announcement of a wave of new hiring. So looking at a quick glance, the four areas that many macroeconomists will look at are employment, housing starts, industrial production, and home prices. Employment is a measure of job growth. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics releases monthly payroll employment figures from its current employment statistics survey, and most economists will use a three-month moving average on those. Housing starts, a measure of investment. The U.S. Census Bureau releases monthly data on single-family housing permits, same thing, using a three-month moving average. Industrial production is a measure of output. The U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis releases monthly information on industrial production by type of industry. And home prices, that's a measure of wealth. This information is available quarterly, not monthly, but it is included in the index because of the importance of housing and the economic climate. Information from the Federal Housing Finance Agency is converted to a monthly frequency by spreading the quarterly change out over three months. So the U.S. Business Cycle Map, December of 2013, this is what the national economy looks like. The green indicates states where the economy is expanding. Red would be recession. Yellow would be at risk, and blue, light blue, would be recovering. Now, if you were to look at this map back in 2009, every state was red.
Yeah, this is really different than last.
So we're starting to see some real positive changes. The states that were in green were pretty much those that were energy providers, such as North Dakota, Texas, Oklahoma, Alaska. Now we're seeing Utah, Colorado, Massachusetts, Minnesota, and Iowa also, Nebraska. Idaho's regional economy, the metropolitan statistical area, there are approximately 366 MSAs. Metropolitan statistical areas have at least one urbanized area, I won't go into the definition of how they define that, with a population of at least 50,000 plus adjacent territory, which have a high degree of social and economic interaction with the core as measured by commuting ties. They must have at minimum one county, but often include several counties. So in Idaho, this is a map that depicts the MSAs and how they are currently functioning. All of the MSAs within the state are in recovery. The local economy, metropolitan statistical area, there are 576 metropolitan areas. Must have an urbanized area of at least 10,000 in population, but less than 50. They must be at least one county. Latah County is a metropolitan statistical area. And this is a map that depicts all of the metropolitan areas within the state. So looking at employment, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road. When you look at the blue line, which is the Moscow metropolitan area, you'll see that employment peaked at 2008. And then with the recession, we crashed and burned, and you could see the trend line heading south. And it wasn't until 2011 that things started picking up again. But the rate in which it's picking up is relatively modest. And so when you project forward, you can see that 2017 is almost at the same location as the 2008 peak. And so when you hear people talk about the lost decade within the economy, that's kind of what we're looking at. So you can see from 2003 to 2013, we actually had a net change in jobs of negative of one and a half within the area. The nation as a whole grew 4.6%, and the state grew 9%. You look at unemployment, then the Latah County has traditionally been lower than many of the other locations within the state. This is for December. These were the unadjusted rates for December, the preliminary rates for December, but dropping to a low of 4.8%. Housing starts, permits issued, not a tremendous amount of permits. Multifamily, you can see, started to take off a little bit, and single-family residential actually fell from 2011 to 2012, started picking up a bit, and two-family residential started picking up a bit as well. Industrial production and primary industries. When economists look at different regions, and they are evaluating a region for economic strength, they look at primary industries and they look at reactive industries. And primary industries in a nutshell are those industries that they export, they import money and export a good or a service outside of the local community for the most part. And reactive industries are those that are dependent upon the growth of the primary industries. And so when we look at the growth rate between 2003 and 2013, we can see that we had growth in agriculture, 25%, which was significant. Mining and quarreling, because of the small sample size that was not disclosed, manufacturing, 39%, wholesale trade, 49%. But we saw big drops in construction, which is a reactive industry, retail trade, finance and insurance, real estate rental and leasing. Some of the larger gains as well were in management of companies and enterprises. But we lost government, state employees, and professional scientific and technical services really took a huge hit, and so did transportation and warehousing. When you look at the one-year change from 2012 to 2013, you'll see manufacturing has picked up by 1%. Retail trade has picked up. Management of companies has picked up. Private educational services, healthcare, social assistance, agriculture, wholesale trade, transportation, finance and insurance, professional scientific and technical services. You'd also note that the Latah County transient occupancy tax increased 11.28% from fiscal year 2012. The losses in sectors were information, arts, entertainment, recreation, government, construction, real estate rental and leasing, accommodation and food service, and University of Idaho enrollment. And I should have probably gone back to that. That's in the prior slide. Student enrollment at the University of Idaho from 2003 to 2013 dropped 7.46%, and that's a huge primary industry for us. Industry of students. One of the other areas that you look at as a site selection consultant are what, how much money do people make and which jobs pay above the county average? And are they growing in those particular areas? And so this is a table that identifies which industries pay the most in relationship to the county's average of $40,700. I wish Paul Kimmel were still here, because, boy, those utility guys are bank and bank. Home prices, average home sale prices in Latah County increased 2.53% from $213,792 in 2012 to 219,200 in 2013, after a 3.87% increase the prior year. The average home sale price in the City of Moscow remained the same from 2012 to 2013 at $235,000, after a 2.46% increase the prior year. Population growth, very slow. Annual growth rate average of 0.77% is forecasted through 2018. Questions?
Art?
I've got a couple for you on metropolitan statistical areas. Can those be cross-border, or do they have to be within a state?
They can be cross-border. Many of them are, including the Lewiston. Clarkston is an MSA.
So are there relative advantages or disadvantages to that? And would it behoove Moscow to discuss with Pullman a metropolitan statistical area?
I believe that there are advantages to being a metropolitan statistical area. There are primary two. Once you become an MSA, then transportation funding, you get a direct allocation of those federal dollars. There's also, if you are an entitlement entity, then you would also be, that would allow for a direct allocation of community development block grant dollars as well. And probably of higher value is the fact that suddenly you're on everybody's list as an MSA. Because as a site selector, when you're looking at 376 markets on behalf of a company, and they say, okay, in three weeks, we want to know the strongest regions to put this particular type of project, normally that's where you start at. Our MSA is because the markets are bigger or larger, and that's where you're going to be able to improve your client's risk position.
How does one go about accomplishing that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bedke, we actually went through about a year and a half ago and did a little bit of analysis on that, and worked with some folks over in Pullman. I took every census block group to see whether or not I could make the tie in order to reach the population requirement between the two communities. There's a separation distance that you have to have, and unlike Clarkston and Lewiston, they get extra Bennys if there's a river there, then you're allowed to have this separation of so many miles between jurisdictions. And I thought maybe we could do the same thing with the airport, but you only get a little bit associated with that. So based on the projections I did a year and a half or two years ago, it looked like we were, that within the region, we would hit the population threshold by 2018, but we wouldn't have the connectivity threshold that was mandated under the requirement at that point. But if Pullman decided to put more residential houses in on the east side of the airport and get closer to the border, then that could dramatically change things. But if I remember correctly from the information I had, they were actually growing to the northwest, which was in the opposite direction for more, we needed the growth to occur.
Well, let's go to Walter Art, and then I'll come back to you, okay?
Jeff, one of your slides showed the U.S. and Alaska, and showed the middle part of the country and Alaska as expanding, I think was the term.
Right. Energy.
Explain Massachusetts.
That is high technology and medical.
Okay, thank you.
Same thing with Utah.
Okay, Art, I'll go back to you.
One other one, on your measure of construction and housing starts, were the previous years a whole-year count versus 2013, which of course we're only three months in? Or were they measured at the same point in the year?
They were the fiscal year for those three years. So from... So from October 1st to October 1st.
Okay, so 2013, still got some time to go.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not perhaps as grim-looking as it seemed?
No. No. I mean, and my honest opinion is that things are slowly getting better, but there's still some challenges. And the enrollment issue, and if we, if the region continues to grow primary jobs, export-oriented types of jobs, where you import money and export a good or a service, the rest of everything else will become healthier. It just may take a little bit of time. And particularly when you see the graph, that first graph on the employment, where it showed, we're still trying to catch back up to 2008.
Other questions or comments to Jeff? Thank you, Jeff, very much for that terrific report.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the quarterly report on Paradise Path Task Force. Tom Grunden will present. Tom, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Tom Grunden, staff liaison to the Paradise Path Task Force. And I'm pleased to introduce Margaret Dibble, who is the current vice chair of the Paradise Path Task Force, to make our second quarterly report. Margaret?
Yes, well, I know you've all eagerly been awaiting our second quarterly report. So we'll start here at the western end of the trail. This is just where it becomes the Chipman Trail. How do I make this thing move? So we have a list of accomplishments for you here tonight. Yeah, so, well, we've had our meetings and we've had quorums at all of this. We have been criticized for that in the past. We passed our mission statement, which I'll get to in a little bit. Asked the city council to approve that. We encouraged, I might have said nagged, but we got striping along the Paradise Path, which is really nice if you're riding that in dim light. And we also got the solar batteries replaced in those lighted bollards along the Paradise Path, and that also helps. Little less necessary now that the days are getting longer. We did a very nice exhibit at the Commission Fair, mostly done by my fellow task force member Karen Clifford. We talked to a lot of people and showed off our path that we're very proud of. We elected officers for the 2014 calendar year. The president is Margaret Littlejohn, who is currently lounging on the beach in Hawaii. And I'm the vice president, I guess it was the year of the Margretts. We've been working with Mike Lowery's students to develop signs for the paths. You know, it's really nice to know where you're going on a path. I think when people know where they can go with it, it won't be much more useful. And we have some goals that we'll get to, that we work on every, every meeting. We look at them to see how we're doing on them. So here's our mission statement. Paradise Path Task Force promotes and advises on the development of path system in and around Moscow, embracing important community concerns, including active transportation, recreation and resource conservation enhancement. Now, you may not have noticed, but I certainly noticed that the Paradise Path goes through both those urban renewal areas. No doubt, it is helping them a great deal. This shows the eastern end of the path. So we have some goals for the coming year. We'd like to improve the connection of the path at the southeast corner of Highway 95 and Troy Highway intersection. As you can see here, there's sort of, you have a little muddy strip there where people go, because the path heads south. And the way this is designed is you head south on the path until you can turn and head back north on the sidewalk. This doesn't make a whole lot of sense. One of the things we do on the task force is get out and patrol this path. Some of these places just do not look like they were designed by people who walk and bicycle a lot. But this is a very simple fix. So get a little pavement in that currently muddy strip. We would like to help promote the Blackbird Crossing development. This is out, well, it's right across from the old Tidymon's, now NRS. And actually, the area is off to the left of the slide. There's kind of a wide area, and that is the area where the Blackboard Crossing, some sort of something is going to go in there. We'd like to do, start bike rides out there to get people familiar with the path and to, of course, promote the path. This is perhaps our most ambitious goal, but it's one that's generated a lot of excitement. We'd like to get the city council to move forward on approving this, setting this as a goal, to like fundraising, grant writing, engineering, and to begin. We want to put an underpass under this bridge. Mike Lowery's students, again, have done a lot of work on this. There's room underneath there. Most of the time, the creek is low enough so you could put a path alongside, underneath the bridge. As you can see with that picture on the right, the rather bewildered cyclist trying to figure out how to get across Highway 8 right there. I've had a number of people comment, you know, you can take the Latah Trail to the Paradise Path, and it's a great way to commute in from Troy, but then you can't get across the highway. This is something that needs to be fixed. This, I'm not quite sure where this sign is from, but we would like to have some signs like this along the path to help to find a way. We've got Mike Lowery's students, again, who are interested in working on this, some sort of schematic, so you can look at this and see where you might go on our path. And we had four of our, or what we call orphan paths. These are areas, they, that, there are public right-of-way. As you can see from the pictures, they're well-used, little deer trail, game trails where people walk, but they're muddy, slippery. We do have these, four of these, Morton and E Street, Jim Lyle Rotary Park, the Two-Nut and Mountain View, and the Peachtree to Virginia Street. These were all approved by the city council. And when we get these done, we have, we have more to bring to the city council. We call them orphan paths because, well, they're rather neglected. And they don't really connect to anything yet, but we'd like to make them connect and be part of the whole Paradise Path system. So we want to have a, or take our display to the farmer's market. We have three dates where we'll have people there at the market. We want to work on our Paradise Path Task Force website. We'd like to have some workdays. And we'd like to have some bicycle rides out on Paradise Path. And we certainly like all the city council and the mayor to come along, because this is, sometimes I'm a little surprised that some of the city people don't know as much as we think they should about the paths and where they go and, and how they work. You know, how you ride them, how you walk on them, how they connect with the rest of the, the city, the streets and the path. And then, of course, we're always looking for new members. We want to, out at the Berman Creekside Park, we have a couple of gardens. We have a butterfly garden and a sensory garden. Now, butterfly garden has plants that attract butterflies. The sensory garden, you can't see it very well, this is winter, but it's got the plants that have kind of a nice feel. A lot of this is something of lamb's ear. It's kind of soft and fuzzy, and we get some aromatic plants in there. You kind, you can pull the leaves off of them and squish them, and they smell good. We'll have to have a lot of those. So those have been a little neglected, but we hope to get together with the garden club and the water department, Parks and Recs, and do some work out those, there to improve those. We've been working a lot with safe routes to school. Brooke Lowery is a very active member of our task force. And we want to get people familiar with Paradise Path. It's a very safe, healthy way to get around. I think this is a walking school bus headed along the Mountain View, I believe, it'd be headed for either McDonald's School or our Moscow Charter. And we would like to work with the transportation committee and other civic groups to build support for a third-street pedestrian bridge. I know this is not a really, not a lot of consensus on this, but you see this bridge at College Avenue, there's a bridge to, just to the south of the street, and a pedestrian bridge that was put in and without altering the road bridge. And so we would like to have, support something like that. It's third street, it would be to the side, so that if, if and when, or, we have no opinion on putting a, or a street bridge through there, but our pedestrian bridge would not interfere with that if that were to happen. And we want to, we all, when the plans were out, the proposed plans for Mountain View, the task force all turned out and made comments on that. So we're very supportive of improving Mountain View for pedestrian and bicycles. We all really liked the traffic circle. And we have worked with other groups, and there are some priorities that we came up with. The highway underpass at White Avenue and Steiner, I mentioned that, that's under the bridge. Improved Polk Street extension, the third-street bridge I mentioned. And then there was, the last two, well, we had a number of people, and there were some ties here. The bridge, sorry, my mind's going blank here. White Avenue to Lynn Street, underpass under Highway 95, near Highway 8. A tube tunnel under Highway 9, is it 9? Near, near Mountain View. You cross the highway there without taking your life into your hands. And realign the Llewellyn and third-street intersection to make it easier to get across and get some new, new paths to the north and, and west along Farm Road. So there are some things we'd like from the city council. We'd like city council to approve our mission statement. We'd like them to accept our report. Allow the improvement of the connection, the Highway 95-Troy Highway intersection, that's that muddy strip I showed you, where it would, people take a shortcut, put the sign at Blackbird Crossing, and decide to proceed on Troy-Highway-White Avenue-Stiner intersection, that's the underpass, under the bridge along the creek, so you can start getting, writing grants and getting designs and engineering and generally getting started on that. Any questions? Comments?
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, ma'am. I want to compliment the Paradise Path Task Force for what you've been doing with, during the past two quarterly reports, this one and the one that was made in December. I believe you made the comment that you were criticized for not having a quorum. I take a little exception to the criticism part, you did not have a quorum. And it, and it really, in my opinion...
That was over the summer, when people were traveling.
No, it was longer than that, because I was liaison to the committee, and I don't, I'm not here to get in an argument, because I support you. I'm on your side.
Yes, we know this, Walter.
I, I was the one that said, you know, I'd been to meetings over the year and so forth, and they had a lot of trouble getting quorum. You fixed that. You've taken care of that, you made an effort, and you've told your people, if we're going to stay in business, be here. And they've done it, and that's great. I would like to see your proposed, the new mission statement considered, and if the council agrees, approved. My problem is that in your list of things you would like for the council to do, none of those were listed for us tonight as action items to consider. We were asked to accept the report. Period, end of story. Possibly my question by email to Margaret Littlejohn about the mission statement prompted the list of requests, but, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Gary, would it be possible, I don't want to wait for another quarter. I don't feel that the council, and they can disagree with me, is prepared to take action on the list that was just presented to us because of, we just not got it. Would it be possible to bring this back with action items at an earlier date, in the next couple of council meetings, if staff can be prepared? Regarding the mission statement, I would like to see the original, the subsequent ones, and then the one that's proposed, so we can compare them. I don't have a particular problem with it, but I think that would be helpful.
Certainly, we can do that.
Regarding, if I may, regarding the Troy-Highway-Stiner Avenue underpass...
Underpass.
Under, under thing. What, the request in, earlier in your presentation was approve moving forward. Personally, I'm more comfortable approving specific requests as opposed to general moving-forward type things. So those are my comments. I encourage them to have a quorum, have an agenda, have a plan, have a program, report to us quarterly, and come ask us whatever it is you want us to do in the end. They're certainly doing that, in my opinion. And I think that we need to look at taking some action in the interim now with the things they're bringing us. I'm just not prepared to make a motion on them tonight.
Is there a way we could go back to the slide that shows the different projects you'd like the council to?
No doubt there is. I'm not sure, I know how to do it.
I guess while we're waiting for that, getting the mission statement back in front of the council is not an issue. We can certainly get that. And regarding the particular punch list, and Walter, we can get that set up, well, as soon as I can meet with staff and we can talk about how to bring that forward.
Tom's got a point.
The projector's not projecting.
There you go.
Almost.
And Gary, I would certainly welcome other council to weigh in on this. It's not just, not just me.
I just had a couple of comments about the list.
There you go.
The bottom three are those that likely need to be, well, they need to be, it depends on what form the council wants to take. If the council wants to approve the Paradise Path Task Force, working on these, that's one thing. My concern would be whether or not the council wants to approve them as projects at this point. So there come, I think your comment about the underpasses, review it, see if it's feasible, and then have a plan to move ahead and get that authorized, correct?
My comment was regarding the three, four, and five-type items, I'm better able to approve a specific request with detail than I am a blanket, allow improvement of type...
Exactly. Yeah, we can do that.
Tommy, had a comment?
Yeah, a couple of things. I guess, one, just following up on what Walter's saying, perhaps just giving them the blessing to work up some of these concepts is within, is within reason then. Because we have to be delivered some kind of specific proposal to chew on, but after they've had some time to, to work on it. In general, though, I, I really welcome all the work that the path, that the task force is doing. I, I know this intersection very well.
Yes.
I hit it several times a day, and the way I tend to do it... And the way I tend to do it is I, I come out at that road intersection, I just basically go out into traffic. In the access point there, there's a curb cut, and so I just go out that way and then ride in traffic, but, you know, I'm not sure, not everybody's comfortable doing that kind of riding. So I can see why this would be a very helpful way to make it work for, for others.
Yeah, just brings you off the path onto the sidewalk without having to backtrack.
Exactly. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention was, I was just at a couple of national conferences in the last two weeks in DC, the National League of Cities Conference and the National Bike Summit. And at both of those, it was, I've, I attended sessions where City Council members and mayors from a variety of cities, large and small, were reporting on being convinced very much that in order to grow economically and to attract the best and brightest, you know, employees to the businesses located within their cities, they need to attract young folks who want to bike and ride, bike, ride their bikes or walk. And so making their communities walkable and bikeable is an important part of their economic development strategy. And I found that to be very interesting, the linking of making the transportation systems within their communities address all transportation needs as a way to help make their community an attractive place. I mean, I think the quote that I heard several times was millennials are on the move. Do you want them in your community? You know, do you, are you, are they going to be moving to your community or not? So it's, it was a very interesting thing that was put forward at a number of different sessions that I attended. But anyway, I really welcome what you're doing. I think it's an important part to help make people feel safe when they're moving around town.
Well, thank you. You know, I have found myself in, in cities occasionally, in these strange places where there's, you know, you know, a freeway there and a big road there and maybe a shopping mall here. And, and I have this feeling that there's no place to go and I can't get there.
Yep.
It's, it's a pretty discouraging feeling and I certainly wouldn't want to live in a place like that.
Details.
Yeah.
Dan?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and accept the second quarter report and direct staff to bring back the mission statement along with the past mission statements and help with development of the other three action items that were presented by the task force.
Second that.
Okay, Dan made a motion to accept the report. And with the other things to bring back to staff, Gary got that, Tom's second it. And I'll start with a roll call for John.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Margaret, very much for a terrific report.
One more small item for anybody who's watching, anybody here in the audience, don't be shy about signing up. There's plenty of open slots on the task force and other members would be most welcome.
Yeah, we, we really would. You know, we're out there on the path. We sort of have our sections that we, we frequent a lot, so the more people we have, the more path inspectors we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is we're going to revisit the city property we have that was previously leased by CJ's. Dwight, would you present, please?
Item eight.
Item eight.
Number eight.
There we go. Good evening. Well, as the mayor just mentioned, you previously had this item before you, just the last Council meeting, as a matter of fact, and you approved a lease with Cadillac Jacks or CJ's. And the very next day, they decided not to, that they were no longer interested. So now we've got to decide what to do with this property. With that, different options are still available. One is to close the, close the property to parking and landscape it, adding curbside parking. We could lease, we could try to lease the property to another business, develop the property into a public parking. And we could sell the property. Or a variety of other things that could possibly be done. This item was reviewed by the Administrative Committee this last Monday, and they were tending to support possibly leaving the property as it is for the time being until we get a chance to figure out what we could do with it. Community Development Director, Bill Belknap, is the lead on the project for the entryway beautification projects. And he said there, it's possible that we could bring this into that project. I've not talking, spoken to him since, so I don't know if he went anywhere with that as far as discussing that with the consultants, but there you go. I do have a few slides here. You've seen these already, not a very good one, but the primary thing here to look at is there would be the curbside parking. And we'd basically just close this off and plant it in something, or that could be left empty. You could bring in a, these portable food vendor type things with some kind of planting along the road, something of that nature. This here was an idea that was floated some time back, but it required the, the CJ's to allow parking to be developed along their property. This was their property line, and he is not in favor of that. So as you can see, there's not much parking if you did develop this, that could be done with it. And just an aerial view so you can see how it kind of fits in with the lay of the land. It's hard to see, but there's the right-of-way lines. And you can see A Street, Main Street, Washington, where the intersection comes through. There was question what would happen if someday this was ever, I don't know, developed so that the road went through and it, this, this park, this little property would have really no effect on that. And then to give you a view going northwest down Washington, you can see the property on the left and how it looks. So you can see why sometimes people have the concern about how it looks. And on the right-hand side of the road, you can see where they, at one time, had planted vegetation along the side of the road. That actually looks pretty nice. So in a nutshell, that's where we're at, and staff is seeking some, some kind of direction on this, so we know what to do with this.
Wayne, you chaired the admin on the 10th, because Tom was back at the National League of Cities Conference. You want to talk?
That's correct, Bill. Admin did hear this again. And we discussed a variety of, of different options, from selling the property to putting it out for lease to somebody else. And the admin's direction was that we don't really see that there's a big rush to move forward with this. I think that there may be some opportunity further down the road, but I, I think we, the admin would like to see it just kind of sit as is. Parks and Rec would be responsible for keeping the trash picked up and cleaned up. And I'd also like, the admin also would like to see the beautification project move forward and include that particular area of property also.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Sitting on that beautification group, committee, I don't, I don't see any problem in including it if we're talking about a few street trees along the couplet there. I am not a fan personally of landscaping this entire property. It, it lies between two or more bars. I think it's an invitation to problems if you've got landscaping in there that creates hiding places or places for things to happen that we really don't want to. So while I would be a fan of getting some trees along that, the shot that Dwight showed, I would not be in favor of, of making it a park or making it Bushville or whatever. Question, Gary, and you may not, you probably don't know the answer to this because I just thought of it, if I may.
Sure.
I remember Mr. Roderick making a comment that some, sometimes some of the city's water department people park in this lot. Does the city have a need for this as a city employee parking lot? And you may feel free to say, I've never thought of it, and I'll find out, because I just now thought of it myself.
Well, I don't know that I haven't thought of it before. Our employees park, there is some area adjacent to the water department, and there is street parking down there. So if we wanted to develop that into employee parking, then of course those people would no longer be parking on the street. So that's something that could be looked at as well.
But if we did, would we have to develop it per our regulations or whatever says you can only get two parking places on it, and you've got to landscape it, and you've got to pave it, and you've got to do all this stuff? I mean, it may not be possible for the city to say, any employees that want to park in that and stay off of CJ's property can do so, just get in there and get any way you want to, like people have done for years. Or would we have to develop it as a real parking lot, which really doesn't work, as Dwight has shown?
Well, I'd have to talk to, to Bill Belknap. I don't know that if you don't change it, change the nature of the parking lot, that you have to develop it. But again, I'd have to check with Bill on that. If you're going to keep it for employee parking, then it'd have to be posted, otherwise the public would park on it. So it, we'd have to develop some proposals.
If I may, which is what I believe administrative has recommended. That, if, do I understand you correctly? In other words, don't chain it, don't post it, don't do anything, just let whoever's using it, use it, and we'll start cleaning it up?
Couple, a couple of things in the admin meeting, Mr. Mayor, is first of all, the admin commission, committee was not a proponent at all of, of turning it into a pocket park or doing any further landscaping other than maybe some streets, street trees along there. I did ask Bill Belknap about what type of improvements would have to be done to that parking lot if the city was just going to go ahead and use it. He said it could just stay like it is. It wouldn't have to be paved, it wouldn't have to be landscaped. So that kind of led the admin committee on with the direction that they went with, just recommending that we just leave it like it is right now, perhaps putting some street trees in it, sitting back and kind of taking a wait-and-see attitude as far as what might come up and what the desires might be.
Dan, you had a comment you want to make here?
Well, I, I'd like to, you know, if we're talking about parking down there, see what kind of, if we did block it off, how many spots we would gain on Main Street versus how many we would gain in that parking lot. I am in favor of doing something, working with, like Walter said, working with the, I guess we'll call it the, the entrance beautification plan, somehow adding this to that. I mean, there's a lot of potential there for, for possible public art or, or something like that, that, you know, that I would hope wouldn't become an attractive nuisance, but, but something that, that might speak to, you know, historic downtown Moscow, some, some sort of signage or something like that. So, yeah, I think that including it in the entryway project is, is a good idea, but I would like to compare, I mean, it looks like we could gain quite a few street parking spots there compared to what, if we had to fully develop the lot, how that would work out.
Dwight, can you go back to the slide that showed the-
Walter, hang on, hang on a second, Walter. I want to go to Tom here.
I guess I'm, I'm agreeing with Dan. I, I think that we can gain quite a few spots from along the, the street itself and block it from people driving up onto there. And I, I think that we can also probably have it added to the beautification thing. And rather than designing it here on council, I, I also agree with, with Walter that we don't really want to create hiding spaces in there. But I think it can be done very nicely so that it could be open space that could contribute to, you know, a more beautiful downtown entryway kind of a thing with street trees and maybe some other, you know, things that create a nice space there. So, but I, you know, I think we should hand it to somebody to start working on a design for it.
I haven't heard from Art and John, so I want to, you guys-
Yeah, I'm kind of in line with Dan and Tom on this one, that I wouldn't mind seeing it blocked off and left in its current situation with street trees incorporated along that northeast side. And by doing so, it looks like you gain at least five parking spaces along Main Street, which is actually more than would be gained through any development of a formal parking lot within that space due to its odd geometry. So I'm along with Tom and Dan on this one. Block it off, put in some street trees, and just bank it for later.
Okay, John?
So essentially, if we're going to do that, we're just going to tell the guy that owns the property that his four places, he can no longer get at.
We own the property, John. The city does.
No, the property-
Go, go to the other one, Dwight.
Right there, he owns those one, two, three, four, and one handicapped unit, parking place. That's owned by Phil Roderick.
You talking about those five, John, that's right to the bottom of that?
Right.
That's what you're talking about?
That is not owned by the city. That's owned by Phil Roderick, who owns CJ's.
That's not paved parking, is it?
No. No, it's his parking.
Yeah, well, it's Browler or whatever, it's just-
It's not parking right now. There are logs laid along the property line that preclude any use, any use of that property. There, the-
I think you can see it there, John.
Yeah, he's got logs laid across there to keep anybody from parking on that property.
Yeah, he doesn't want anybody there.
Whether or not we would be precluding his use of that property by closing the entrance, I do not have an answer.
Gary, you want to comment on this?
It's not public right-of-way. The city is an outright owner of the property, so the adjacent property owner has no right to the use of that side yard utilizing the city's property for access.
Because it's not landlocked in any way from public right-of-way.
No, it's just a, it's just a property line that extends beyond his building.
Okay. Tom?
I think we, I also noticed there today, there's a sign on the street at the entryway of that property that, you know, the city property, that we'd have to consider removing or figuring out what needs to happen with that at some point.
Okay.
Well, I agree with, with Wayne. I, I think that we ought to leave it as it is for the time being and maybe flesh out some other ideas instead of making a decision right now.
You want to make that into motion, John?
Sure, yeah. Is that okay?
Whoa, Russ. Sounds like you're making a motion.
Well, I would, I guess I would move then that we leave the situation as it is concerning the small piece of triangular-shaped property to the north of CJ's and to the south and west of Highway 95 and to the, and have the staff try to come up with some ideas that would coincide with the beautification and the possible extension of the downtown area to the north.
I'll second him.
Okay. John made a motion, Dan seconded that motion. Dan?
Yeah, I, I think that, like, like Wayne said earlier, there's not a, there's no real hurry here, you know, but I think a lot of us see different things, some of us see slightly the same things, but, you know, until we get to the point where, I mean, if we're going to have street parking there, we're going to want to rebuild the sidewalk so there's not a curb cut and things like that. So, you know, like you say, it's not a hurry. We'll, hopefully Dwight, Dwight's crew will be able to keep it up and the, or Tom's crew, I guess, in the, in the meantime and-
Somebody's crew.
Make sure that we keep our city clean.
Wayne?
Yeah, I'm not against, you know, closing it off if that's ultimately what we end up doing and, and putting five more parking spaces along the street, that probably could turn out to be quite beneficial. It just gets back to the original concept for admin was, don't think there's a big rush to do anything right now. Let's just sit back and look at it and, and let staff make a determination what might be best. You know, maybe in 30 days they'll come back with a recommendation that we'll like and we can move forward with it.
Well, that's exactly what the motion is, is to leave it as it is and have, give staff direction to take a look at this thing and bring it back to council in some form, which would come through the admin product committees again. Art?
Is there a time constraint we'd like to put on that, like what, to hear a report back within at least six months or something? Otherwise, it could just go onto a back burner and linger ad infinitum.
I would- I would, I would amend that motion to do as Art suggested, within six months.
Bring the issue back within six months for the status report.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, John made that motion to attach that amendment for staff to bring it back to us within six months and Dan seconded that motion. I think I'm ready for a vote and I'll start with Art.
Aye, aye.
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 And that goes six to zip, so staff will be bringing us back. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dwight.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to number nine, comprehensive annual financial report. Carp report from Don. How are you, Don?
This is Don's favorite time of year.
Yep.
dressed all in black, huh?
Yeah, Don looks like Johnny Cash.
Unleashed on the microphone.
Your floor is yours, Don. You can take.
Thank you. Don Palmer, finance director for the city, and I'm here to present the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2013. This, this statement, this, these financial statements is our, are, are comprehensive in the sense that they measure our net position as of September 30th, 2013. It's a snapshot, so it tells us where we're at financially at that point in time. And it also measures financial performance over the previous 12 months to that timeframe. When we, when we go through this report, we will be submitting this report for the 11th GFOA award in financial reporting, certificate in financial reporting. And I believe that we need to acknowledge several people, not just myself and, and President Gage in this, but the people that help support that. And that is Sue Nelson, our accounting manager, and the entire accounting staff that, that work on this project. And then besides Mitch, he's got somebody, Nick Nicholson, that also works on that and they make us look pretty darn good when we put this thing together. Also, I want to acknowledge the audit committee. We started the audit committee about 10 years ago, I believe, and it was back when, what was his first name? Hill was.
Jack Hill.
Jack Hill was on the city council and we started that back that, during that timeframe. And John Farble and Marla Kraut are the two that represent that committee and they've done a phenomenal job of going through it this year and really going and making sure that we make some significant changes that help us with our governmental accounting standards. They're little things that we see so much of that, that it's good to have a set of fresh eyes to do that. So Mitch will be going through, we're confident enough that we've had enough review through the audit committee and all the staff, Mitch, myself and Nick, that we think that this will win the 11th GFOA award as well because we've also, in this particular financial statements, have some new governmental accounting standard board pronouncements we've had to approve and incorporate in this. And then Mitch will go through those highlights. So Mitch will go through the first part of this and then I'll go through some comparative analysis and I'll turn it over to him to start that process.
Thanks, Mitch. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Mitch Marks from President Gage. Like Don said, we, what you have in front of you or should have is the published comprehensive annual financial statement, CAFR. There's very few CAFRs presented, I think, or prepared in the state of Idaho. This is quite an accomplishment to do. It takes quite a lot of work to put together. It's quite informative. I think when people, we talked about economic development earlier in the evening, a lot of entities will get your CAFR and use that as a, help decide whether to come here because it talks about the 10 biggest taxpayers. It talks about your economy. It talks about a lot of different things in the statistical section that's used. So the audit report itself, the layout and content, it's governed, governed by governmental auditing standards, the GASB, and it's according to generally accepted accounting principles. I've had questions over time, can we change this letter and such or this presentation? Some, we are stuck with a lot of the wording. If we vary from the letter, they'll come up and you won't get the certificate because the audit report doesn't match or the presentation doesn't match. So this is a standard format that we are required to use. As Don mentioned, the, during the current year, they adopted two new standards, number 63 and 65, and you'll see a few little different things in here this year. One of those you've had in the past, when you issue bonds, you've got the cost of issuing the bonds and you amortize that over several years. Under the new standards, that is no longer there. You took, take that away. One of the notes to the financial statements talks about that and I think it was about a $335,000 adjustment from what last year's financial statements were to this year's because of that new standard. You also see, as you look at this standard, 65 talks about inflows and outflows. They like to add things, new verbiage and such. You won't see a lot of the word deferred revenue anymore. You'll have unearned revenue and that's part of that GASB 65 and some of those changes. So as you look at this, it's a little bit different in the past because of the difference in language. One of the difference, Don mentioned net position. You'll find that everywhere in here this year. Past, we talked about net equity. Now with the new standards, it's net position. So it's just a different, different way to, the title things. The audit report itself is on page 14 and like 15, 16, it actually is a lot longer this year. This is one of the things they did change. It actually has subsections in it now, so they're trying to be a little more clear on, you know, this is the financial statements. The, the financial statements themselves are the management's responsibility. Our responsibility, and next as you go down is, we have a paragraph or two that talks about the auditor's responsibility when we do our audit. You have, we talked about the CAFR. So there's a section that talks about the supplemental information, the management discussion analysis, the budget to actual requirements. They have their own section and then we talk about those. And then we, you know, have a section that talks about the opinion. There are several different sections. Like I said, it expanded, made this quite a bit longer than it was. When we're all done, the city received an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. This is the best you can get. That means we did not find anything during the course of the engagement that felt that the city was not presenting their financial statements in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. And so it, that is what that audit report says. I don't have the, the page number, but there's also two other opinion letters in here. They're toward the very back and, and one of them's related to the governmental auditing standards. This is because, you know, you are a city and basically that talks about internal control as well as compliance. And as we did the audit this year, we did not come across anything that we felt the city's internal control system or their compliance was not according to standards. And so they changed the name. That's not an unqualified opinion. Now that's an unmodified opinion. And so that's just a little different. It says pretty much the same thing. Because the city expends over $500,000 of federal financing, there's another opinion letter in the back that talks about the Single Audit Act. And it's the same type of thing. It talks about internal control as well as compliance and.
That's on page 112.
Okay.
The first one was on 110, the second is on 112.
While you're on that, if I may.
Go ahead, Wayne.
On 113, on your report on internal control over compliance, you make a comment in here. You say that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance that we consider to be material weaknesses. Then you go on to say, however material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified. I assume that's put in there more as a disclaimer than anything. And that's one of the things they changed this year. That's brand new in this letter that wasn't last year. They have modified that to say, okay, we didn't find anything, but now we have to say that, that doesn't mean they're not there during the course of the engagement.
You knew that from last year, that this was new, right?
Yeah. Of course. I remember last year as verbatim.
Please continue.
So that, that's those, that letter also has the, an unmodified opinion on the internal control and the, on your client. The audit report itself is in quite a few different sections and that just is a little summary of where everything comes from. To do a CAFR, you basically are going to have to have the introductory section. You also have to have the statistical section. The rest of that, you're going to have the audit report. You have to have a management discussion analysis to do a CAFR. You're not really required to do that. If the city does not want to do a comprehensive annual financial report, you actually not have a MDA and it's not going to be a substandard report. You have the notes, required supplementary, supplementary and the combining statements. So that's the layout of the report. The fund overview, you have the major funds and major funds are defined by, by numbers, by basically if you exceed like 10% of a total of like the governmental funds or 10% of your proprietary funds and then you exceed 5% of the total of the citywide, you're considered a major fund. And you have several, you have the general fund, the streets, parks and rec, your capital projects and the Hamilton fund. The non-major funds are the ones that aren't the larger funds. We've got the transit center, that's also new this year. You did not have a fund for the transit center last year. I think that was completed in December of 2012 and the operation started subsequent to that. So this fund just shows that operation from that point and it's the operations, not the construction. You have your water, sewer and sanitation for your enterprise funds. Basically, the general fund is the fund that's used to account for all funds, not required to be accounted for anywhere else. That's your general administration, your public safety, a lot of things are in there of that nature. Your special revenue, ones that are, the revenue is specific for that purpose. They changed the standards a couple of years ago. They, they wanted to get a lot of these collapsed if you didn't, they want them actually in the general fund, which I think would sort of mislead, you know, if your, if your parks and recreation fund didn't over, I think the word they used, significant, significant revenue from its own operations. They wanted that to be part of the, the general fund. We've taken the position, the city has and we have in the presentation of the audit, that the, the revenue is significant and, and as Don mentioned, you received your certificate last year from GFOA, so obviously they did not find any issue the way we presented that.
Do you want to do this part from here on?
Good. Basically, you look at the, this is just a chart on your general fund, streets, parks and rec, on your fund balances, you know, from like 2009 to 2013. You can see the general funds rising slightly. Street funds go up and down a little higher than last year and parks and rec is just a little bit lower. And the enterprise funds, like I mentioned, you have the three and you actually have two funds in your accounting system for each one of these. You have a water fund, you have a water, capital projects fund, sewer fund, capital projects. So it's, there's actually six funds that are combined into the, these three when you show it on the financial statements. These are different accounting. This has depreciation, this has capitalization of your assets. Your debt is shown in these funds where that is not shown in your governmental fund type. I'll turn it back over to Don. He'll go over some of the revenue expenses and changes from the year.
The water fund, basically the revenues are exceeding the expenses and that's mostly because we haven't gotten to the capital expenses yet. There's about $3.5 million sitting in the capital reserve fund for capital projects in the water fund. And that's designed for some of the things that we've been, I shouldn't have hit that by accident. That would be designed for some of the things that we had in the rate study, reservoir, line, line replacement, well number 10 is going to be funded with capital, capital funds or debt service funds, so those, the bond proceeds, so that's not part of that project. And, and so that's why you'll see revenues exceeding expenses and they're beginning to match in 13. The water's net position, the green is the water capital accumulation. We're building those funds up for those projects. 2012, or the blue is basically the operating fund, which is the working capital. It's fairly stable and moves as the budget for the subsequent year moves at 25%. The sewer fund, we, this big blimp, the purple line is the bond proceeds and then the, the blimp above the black line is the refunding of $6.87 million. That was called an advance refunding. That's why there's this delayed expense that occurred in 13, but the bond proceeds were in 12. It was advantageous to take advantage of the, the low interest rate in 12 as opposed to 13. Rates have gone up slightly since then. The sewer's net position is, this is just only the sewer capital accumulation and the sewer operating fund. And the operating fund is stable, but the, the expenses, the green accumulation piece is down about $1.82 million and that's because we, we've done projects this year for that, namely the one out by the U of I.
Don, if I may?
Go ahead, Walter.
You said the operating fund is stable. If that's the blue bars, it doesn't look stable to me. Did I misunderstand?
Well, it's fairly stable because of the piece that you see. This is only measuring the working capital piece. It's not measuring anything else. And so the debt service fluctuates. This does not show the overall net position. Mitch and I were commenting on that early, earlier. We're only trying to measure what is the operating fund and what is the, the accumulation for the sewer, sewer capital accumulation fund. And so those, there's about $1.2 million sitting there in operating funds that, that are being carried over into the subsequent year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Answer your question. The sanitation fund, the, the reason revenues are above the expenses on this one is we've not spent any money on capital as part of the rate study. We will be in the, well, it's chosen the 14, 15 rate study that we will be building the recycling center, expansion project, planning and design and, and future outlay. But, and, and Tim will be bringing that forward hopefully sometime in the summer, at least as far as a concept. So that's what we've been talking about recently. I think we're, we're going to have to delay that a year as we work through facility planning and stuff like that. But that's the reason you see that black line as far as revenues and the expenses are only the operating expenses. And the reason they're so stable on the, on the expense side of this equation is because we have some very tight contracts and they only go up by the CPI adjustments. And so, so that's the only change that you would see there. Sanitation's net position, again, water or sanitation capital accumulation is the piece that's growing mostly. The operating fund is staying stable. The highlights for 2013, and I also show some operating expenses across the board citywide. Constructing the pole barn building that, that was used for public safety. We bought two police interceptors. They paved Mountain View parking lot, finished that up in 2013. Phase two of the intermodal transit center, ITC construction project was in 13. And this, and actually 2012, December was when it was finally completed and launched. And then the sidewalk program was a big piece of that and then College Street. General fund revenues, expenses, this slide is to show general government and public safety. General government's fairly flat all the way across for the last five years. Public safety's climbed just slightly. What is general government? General government is the, these sections here, community development, legislative, executive, admin, finance, legal. Need to read it for you. Police is police services, operation services, animal control, dispatch, public health, engineering, parking services and fire control and prevention. And then we show slides for those items, engineering, fire, police. They're pretty, police has grown slightly. The others are fairly stable. And then most of that, I think, I attribute to the, the cops grant that we got a couple of years ago. We're going to be ending that in, in the end of December of 2015, I believe. And then in general government and non-departmental expenses, most of those are the transfers. We transfer out to capital projects to match the, so we can have funding for the projects that we've been doing over the last 10 years. What is culture and recreation? Parks and rec, admin, parks, recreation, the swimming pool, the youth center, the HURX center, the 1912 facility and art fund. Culture and recreation expenses, the largest one is the expense for 2013, but that's due to $2.1 million in debt retirement when we, we closed out the certificates of participation. It was a smart move to do that because it saved us several hundred thousand dollars down the road. down the road. The street fund expenses, you can see that the revenue is the very top line, it's really, it's kind of deceiving on this graph because it's so stable, it shows every little fluctuation, but the revenue is really flat, has been for 10 years, it hasn't fluctuated in the last 10 years, 75 to 100,000. In fact, if anything, it's gone down over the last 10 years. You can see the dip in 2010, and it slightly picked up to a little bit over the 2013 year. I would attribute that mostly to the highway tax more than I would the gas tax monies. Any questions?
Gary had something he wanted to comment on.
Yeah, I think you need, on that last slide, you need to understand that the bottom legend, their revenue and transfers in. So the general fund does transfer monies into the street fund.
Good point.
Which also, if there is a big overlay project, council wants to throw some more money at it, then it will show that revenue line increasing, when, as Don said, the gas tax, road and bridge tax are fairly flat.
So it's a real difficult one, if, without that transfer, to do some of the projects that we've been doing over the last 10 years. It has to be from general government services to do that.
Walter, you have a question?
Yes, if I may, a couple of them. Don, I noticed the term "business-type activities" appearing through this. Is that a new term, or has it always been in there and I've never paid attention to it before?
It's always been there, but it's the enterprise funds.
I know, I figured that out, but the terminology threw me because I wasn't.
Business-type activities refers to items like depreciation and capitalization are treated somewhat differently, but more and more, and I think you'll agree with me, that the governmental funds are becoming more and more like that, to the most extent. You want to add anything to that?
Well, as you look at the statement of activities, that's on exactly the same basis as the governmental fund, because the depreciation and debt service is shown when you saw, when you look at that statement of net position and statement of activities, that is supposed to be presented just like if the city was totally ran as a business, so it has all that in it. Then you go back to the balance sheets, and they'll change, and they have the reconciliation after each one of those that will show the difference, but it is getting, they want to show that, and so it can make a good comparison.
Okay, thank you. And if I may?
Okay, go ahead, Walter.
When did we pay off Fire Station 3's bonds?
October.
October 23rd.
Last October.
Last October for the, which ones?
Fire Station 3.
It was either October or November.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's right.
So this statement ending September 30 should reflect the Fire Station 3 bonds?
It would have happened after that.
Yes, that's after October 1st, so it'll be on your next.
But it should, it should appear in these statements.
The station, the bond.
Yeah, yeah, Gary's right, it was paid in, been November 1, and it had a final balance of 280,000, and now that's gone.
No, actually, it was paid off in 13, 2013. No ending though.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but it was paid off this year, during this audit.
Oh, during the audit year, correct.
Yeah, 2013, October of 2000, or November 2012, which is this fiscal year.
So it's been over a year.
So it's been a year away, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Wipe it. When were they paid off?
November 1, as Gary pointed out.
Of 20?
Of 2012, 2012.
12.
Well, no, calendar year 2012, but fiscal year, this fiscal year, 2013.
I think Walter's saying, when was the payment made?
Let me, let me, I didn't mean to get all wound up here. My question is, looking at page 60 of the statements, the long-term debt, the GO bonds, list the swimming pool. I don't see the fire station. That's what prompted my question.
Oh, I see. It's because it's paid off.
Okay. Didn't say the statements were wrong, was just trying to understand what happened when the fire station.
I was trying to get to the root of your question, I was asked something wrong.
The root was that I couldn't remember when we paid it off. And then, one last question, if I may.
Gary, go ahead, Walter.
Page 74, I should know this, but I don't, what is HUD reserve?
That's the housing fund that was created, oh, back in the 90s, 80s?
Mid, late 70s, I believe.
And then it required, it goes on for 20 years, as far as payments for the, it was Housing, Urban and Development is what it stood for, and then, so I think about 2000, oh, it was when I was here, so 2003 or '04, those were finally completed, but we had some delinquent payments, and I believe all of those are paid off now, and so that reserve fund is just sitting there with the funds available to transfer over to projects, and I think we've been transferring funds over during each fiscal year for sidewalks, or whatever projects that the council wants us to set aside for.
I was just wondering if we could get rid of it.
We could in the.
Hopefully, by using the money somewhere else.
We could do that in the next fiscal year, yeah. It would still show up because we would have to budget for closing it, but yes, we could do that. I think that, I'll have to double check, but I believe all of the receivables are in. I'll have to double check that. That's the only reason that that fund still exists, is because of the receivables that are still standing.
Pardon me.
In fact.
Gary?
A lot of times, the houses were improved with HUD funds, and the payments weren't made, people waited until they sold the houses, and then we would get our funds, so I was unaware that they were all paid off at this point, but that's certainly something we can look at in the budget.
Well, Mitch just answered the question for me. They were completely paid off in the 2013 fiscal year, so now we can.
Great.
Okay. John?
Don, good report. I spent a number of years for, to be exact, that I've listened to one of your presentations on this, and every time you do one, it's more concise, more to the point, and that's a compliment. I think I'm, and the printed material that goes with it is very self-explanatory, so thank you.
You're welcome. There'll be a book signing at the end of this, and we'll sell these books.
Maybe I'll have other questions for Don, or Mitch?
Well, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Then I would move that we accept, that we approve and accept the audit of the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 13.
Second. Okay, Dan made a motion to accept the report as it is, and Tom seconded that motion. Any discussion before we go for a roll here? We'll start with John.
Aye.
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 Thank you, it is passed. Thank you, Don, thank you, Mitch. And we will move on to reports, and Wayne, I'll start with you, because you chaired the admin committee, was there anything?
We did, and we didn't have a lot on it, we pretty well covered everything that was on that.
Okay.
Other than that, I had two or three commission meetings, one was the LEDC, met on the 15th of last month, and PMWR, looks like they're going to be moving into, they're going to move into the Potlatch urban, it's not an urban renewal district, but it's their business district that they're putting in, so they're pretty excited about that. And a big part of that was through SEDA, as well as a lot of work through LEDC. And then, they're also, LEDC is going through some growing pains right now, they're going to come out of it very well, I think, they're in a, they're doing a major strategic planning workshops right now to redefine what LEDC is going to be doing, and I look forward to seeing that move forward. Farmers Market met last week, and about the only thing of any real importance there was their recommendation to move the Farmers Market to Jackson Street parking lot during the homecoming parade.
It's a good idea.
And then, Pluse Knowledge Corridor met a couple of times since we've had our last meeting, and one was a special committee for the Be the Entrepreneur workshop boot camp, and they did make the decision to move forward and do it this year in June, and so the fundraising is moving forward with that. The instructors are moving forward, and that's going to be, I think it's going to be a really good four-day workshop. And let's see, what else did they have? The Spring Business Showcase will be in the Bell Tower in Pullman, and that'll be on April 3rd, and of course, that's for, there'll be two or three startup businesses that have already committed with some others on the horizon, and that's a really good time for investors to meet these young folks, and they're starting with these new startups for possibility of investments and find out what's going on, so that's the meetings that I've had.
Okay, thank you, Walter, we'll go with you, Public Works and Finance.
Everything that we considered has been approved tonight by the Council on the Consider Agenda, and I have no other reports.
Okay, Art.
Yeah, mine were covered eloquently by the Paradise Path Task Force and Jeff with the URA, so I don't have anything to contribute there. The Sustainable Environment Commission meets tomorrow, so I'll have something on them next time.
Okay, Dan.
The Tree Commission met on March 4th. They're working on, they've got six people so far signed up for the new Adopt a Tree They're also talking about working in a tree owner's manual for citizens to kind of help them with how to, how to plant and what to plant, you know, in our area. Arbor Day is going to be on April 25th, and I'm pretty sure they're going to request that Your Honor goes and helps them out with their celebration out at Gorhamly Park and West Park Elementary, if you probably already heard about it, I imagine. You will pretty soon. And there was some discussion about the, evidently, it's the biggest topic in town is, or at least through our commissions, because almost all my commissions talked about the Main Street expansion, downtown extension, however you want to word it, I can't remember what I called it earlier when we were talking about it, but.
Beautification?
Beautification, the downtown beautification, entryway beautification.
Entryway.
Plan, so everybody's got an idea, so we're going to see lots of stuff from lots of commissions on that.
Beautiful entries.
On the 11th, I met with the Arts Commission. One of the most interesting things coming out of there is they're going to propose that a poet laureate for the city of Moscow, so that's, they're working on potential sponsors for that, and what kind of budget implications that would be. Art Walk will be June 13th, and in October, they're going to have, and we'll talk more about it when we get closer, but a Wilderness Speaker Series that's, has to do with the, was it the 50th anniversary, or it might even be more than that, of the Wilderness Act? I think it's 50th anniversary of the Wilderness Acts, and so there's a lot of speakers that did a big presentation down in Boise, and they're going to bring that up here to the city of Moscow for five days, starting in October, five Thursdays through October and ending in November, so that's going to be interesting. Transportation Commission met on the 13th. There was some discussion about the lot next to CJ's that we talked about earlier. The Joseph Street Ballfields bid is going to open on April 1st, so they discussed about how the path along Mountain View will be on the east side of the swale there. Tom gave a report about the, from the League of American Bicyclists, and he'll probably talk more about that later. And the other big thing that we're going to see pretty soon, hopefully, is the bikes on sidewalks on Main Street, or the prevention of thus, so we're talking about some sort of signage down there, asking people to walk their wheels, and, you know, a little less restrictive than some other signs I've seen in other towns, that, you know, seeing a little more draconian than what we are proposing, so that's all I have for reports.
Thank you, Dan. Tom?
Well, there are a few things I wanted to report on. First, I guess, February 27th, that Thursday, I attended the Clearwater RC&amp;D meeting, it was the meeting that Sue used to attend, and now I'm the liaison to that committee. They spent quite a bit of time talking about a very short timeline that they had for a grant proposal for some economic development in the region. And then there were some, a lot of discussion about whether or not they're going to send people to both the state and the national RC&amp;D meetings. I also had lunch with the Clearwater Economic Development Association Director and discussed a variety of development issues within the five-county region, including Lake Tahoe County, of course, and our involvement, cities' involvement, counties' involvement, and trying to better understand all of those issues. The following week, I went to the National Bike Summit put on by the League of American Bicyclists in Washington DC. Quite a few presentations by various mayors from Pittsburgh, Boston, Atlanta, and then, and some smaller communities as well. I mentioned that a little bit during the Paradise Path Task Force presentation. A highlight of that, a personal highlight, was being able to meet Gary Fisher, the Gary Fisher, for people that know bicycles, he was the person that invented the modern mountain bike, so that was kind of fun, he was there at a reception. But the professional highlight was being able to do some advocacy work on behalf of pedestrian and bicycle safety issues around the country. So there were representatives from 48 states who were available to talk to members of Congress about bicycle and pedestrian safety, and Senator Crapo, who we visited, was very excited and appreciative. He said he read the advanced material that was sent, and said that he was very supportive of the concept and the goals that we brought to him, and he was, so I handed him my bicycle pin, and he smiled and thanked me, and said he was going to wear it onto the floor that afternoon, so whether or not he did, I don't know, but it was, it was fun to see him be so engaged with that topic. There were quite a few funding ideas that I want to bring back, and I'm looking forward to meeting with Lisa Anderson, our grant writing coordinator, for some potential ideas. Tiger Six is being, was being announced that week, and so, who knows, maybe we can put some really large proposals together for connectivity within the community. And then the following week, I attended the National League of Cities meeting, along with the mayor and the city supervisor, and I think that was a very productive set of meetings as well, both on, I attended a funding roundtable session where you could go around to about, I don't know, 25 different tables and talk to administrators of various grants, grant programs within the country. And so, you know, there's some possibilities there, of course, and a number of different meetings on transit, transit funding, and a variety of other issues as well, so, anyway, lots of, lots of things.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
John?
If I don't get this done in two minutes, cut me off.
Sorry, sorry about that, sorry, okay, I talked too much.
The first thing, I went to the 7:00 AM meeting last week on March 12th of the Urban Renewal Agency, that was very well-covered, so I'm not going to say anymore about that. Then at 7:00 in the evening, I went to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and the approval of the commission recommendations regarding North Main Street zoning amendments was written up. We approved it, it's going on to administrative, and then it will eventually work its way back here. And then, the review of the second ADU. And then the review of the second ADU, Public Input Session and Proposed Standards, was discussed and that will happen somewhere around the first week in April.
What's ADU, John?
Accessory Dwelling Unit.
Yes, pardon me, additional dwelling unit. And then the next thing was the Moscow Water Commitment and Palouse Basement Aquifer Committee Voluntary Water Use Limitations. And it was decided by the members that they needed more info on that before they were ready to make any sort of a statement. And then there was a discussion regarding the tandem parking allowance consideration. And that doesn't have anything to do with bicycles. But anyway, they're going to be working on that. And other than that, I will go to the meeting tomorrow with the human, never can, I always want to say, resources.
Rights, Human Rights.
Pardon me?
Human Rights Commission.
Human Rights Commission instead of the.
Human Resources.
Human Resources Commission. Boy, been a long day. Anyway, I'll report on that the next time through.
Thank you, John. As Tom had said earlier, he was back for the National League of Cities, as was myself and Gary Reedner, our city supervisor. And I went to a number of seminars and as did Tom and as did Gary. We kind of tried to split up different things so we could all get a little different perspective on, because they have so many of these seminars to go to. And I want to just hit on a couple of them. I want to talk, once Gary and I attended a priority-based budgeting and an advanced-based priority budgeting seminar, two different seminars, but lasted pretty much all one day. And I was just thinking, after looking at this CAPA report, it'd be kind of nice to be able to present the guys that was doing the seminar, the CAPA report we had, because this thing is pretty well detailed out. And it's pretty doggone impressive what we've seen here tonight with this CAPA report and the auditor was pressing our gauge, and that's a big deal. And we didn't hear any of that sort of thing at all during that seminar. We also, I went to a National Transportation Seminar, Program Seminar, and one of the battles that we face, you know, trying to get streets fixed and, and things of this nature, is they haven't raised a gas tax in years and years and years. And we, you know, gee, me and Christmas, not only on the state level, but a federal level as well. And that's something for the infrastructure, for streets and bridges and those types of things, we've got to look at as, not only as a community, but as a state, but as a country, and that's a big deal. I went to a seminar, university committees, university communities that have universities and how they correlate with council meetings and council members. And that was, that was a very interesting thing that I learned. And I was very happy to go to that one. I'm not going to get into detail on it because I could spend a half an hour just on that one thing. Another seminar that was important was the Funding Critical Infrastructure Systems, and that goes right back to streets and sewers and water lines and different things, whether it be a water reservoir that we need to build or whatever. And, you know, the, one of the things I'll tell you, folks, that you run into is you run into the same things, and one of the neat things about going to the National League of Cities is you run into very similar situations with people in communities throughout the entire country. Some bigger communities, some smaller communities, but a lot of it ties in with budgeting and funding and the critical things that are going across America. So that was very interesting to see for me. And the last one I want, and that I'm going to mention, was encouraging healthier children for a healthier community. And in a way, it was kind of sad to go to, and we're talking about obese kids and how poverty and relationship to obesity goes hand in hand. And that was, and I knew a number of those things, but that was a very interesting seminar to go to as well. So it was something we all need to be aware of. Gary, did you want to add anything about National League before we adjourned tonight?
No, it was a, it was a great conference, I thought. Appreciated the mayor attending the budgeting session. I think that will help us as we go through our first budget together this year. If I may, I would like to mention that several of you attended the funeral for Leslie Moss, our Human Resources Director, who unfortunately passed away this last Tuesday. Leslie worked for the city of Moscow for 19 years and was a great asset to the city and certainly was horrible news to hear of her passing. And I was happy to see the representation of the elected officials and the staff at her memorial service.
Thank you, Gary, for those comments. And Gary did a eulogy basically of Leslie at that service and did a wonderful job, but I was very impressed. In fact, a number of people commented on it, Gary, the words that you spoke and how true they were. She's a wonderful woman. Well, with that, folks, I would entertain a motion for somebody.
Motion to adjourn.
Forgot that, and John seconded it. We'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned.